Welcome to the March 6th Joint Public Hearing of the Eugene City Council and the Board of Commissioners.
And I'll call the Board of Commissioners to order for tonight, and Commissioner Pat Farr is attending by telephone.
And we have two city councilors attending by phone, Commissioner Clark, I mean Commissioner, Councilor Clark and Councilor Poling. And City Manager, do you want to introduce, oh, everybody there?
Yeah.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I will introduce the topic. Tonight is a joint public hearing on the Eugene 2035 Transportation System Plan and a package of amendments to the Metro Plan and Trans Plan. The City Council will also be considering associated changes to the Eugene Code, adoption of a street classification map, an amendment to ordinance number 20528 to remove limitations to density imposed by the previous transportation system plan, and to repeal the Central Area Transportation Study, also known as CATS. Eugene 2035 TSP provides a 20-year blueprint for the city of Eugene's transportation system and will ultimately serve as a transportation element of the Envision Eugene Comprehensive Plan. The 2035 TSP was developed based on extensive stakeholder input, analysis of our existing transportation system, and close coordination with the Envision Eugene planning process. The plan you have before you tonight incorporates the revisions recommended by the Eugene and Lane County Planning Commissions, which they made based on extensive public input. Both the planning commissions recommended adoption of this revised plan. All the public comments submitted to the planning commissions are available for review in the City Manager's also office. And also, the public comments submitted to the City Council and Board are either in your packet or being provided to you tonight.
And our transportation planner, Becky?
Thank you, Commissioners and Councilors. This is a first reading and public hearing of Lane County's co-adoption of Eugene's Transportation System Plan. The Board previously had a work session on this item on January 24th, 2017. On January 3rd, 2017, the Lane County Planning Commission recommended approval of the Eugene TSP with revisions. And those revisions have been incorporated into the draft TSP before you tonight. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to hear from the public, so I'm intentionally keeping my staff presentation brief. No action is recommended tonight. Deliberations and action will be scheduled at a later date after the public hearing process. At subsequent deliberations, staff will be prepared to answer any questions the Board may have. And just as a reminder and a clarification for the public about the differences between Lane County's co-adoption and Eugene's adoption package, Lane County will not be adopting Eugene's street classification map, Eugene Code amendments, ordinance 20528, and repeal of CATS. And Lane County's adoption applies to the area outside city limits but within the city's urban growth boundary.
Thank you. So, um, need to do the first reading and ordinance for the county commissioners. This is the first reading and public hearing of ordinance number PA 1340 in the matter of co-adopting the city of Eugene 2035 Transportation System Plan for application within the urbanizable area outside of Eugene city limits, amending the Eugene Springfield Metropolitan Area General Plan, amending the Eugene Springfield Metropolitan Area Transportation Plan, Trans Plan, providing for an effective date in adopting savings and severability clauses.
Thank you. I think we are ready for the public hearing.
And I'll open the public hearing for the Board of Commissioners.
And first up, I have Rob Zaco. It's like a, anyway, Rob Zaco, and second followed by Sue Walling.
It's like a time warp thing, isn't it?
It's really weird. It's like having an echo.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors, County Commissioners. My name is Rob Zaco, P O Box 773 Eugene 97440. Almost 20 years ago, some called me Mr. Transplan because I helped organize a march for a better transplan. 300 people gathered just outside here on the park blocks and marched on foot and bicycles to the Lane County Fairgrounds. So many people signed up to testify, the second public hearing was required, and it took another couple of years to adopt transplan. Today, I'm the Executive Director of Better Eugene Springfield Transportation, or best for short. We're a broad coalition of business, social service, environmental, education, neighborhood and faith members in our community. We're working for better transportation choices, safer streets, and local neighborhoods. We believe we are better when we speak and act together. Back then, our community fought over sprawl versus no growth, cars versus bikes. Tonight, I'm happy to announce the transplan wars are over. Best goals, the goals of many in our community, and your goals are aligned. We have broad agreement around the seven pillars of Envision Eugene. In particular, the pillar to, quote, "promote compact urban development and efficient transportation options." I should stop here. We're basically done. We have broad agreement that we want to hold our urban growth boundary to protect farms, forests, and wetlands to limit the financial cost of growth. To accommodate 35,000 new residents in the next 20 years, we're looking to see more single-family homes, more student house rises, and more missing middle housing for those just getting started or those in their retirement looking to downsize. In particular, we're looking to see more mixed-use and transit-oriented development along heavily traveled quarters. We also have broad agreement, we want to have more and better transportation choices for people of all ages and abilities. Today, we already have a good roadway system that allows those who choose to drive to get anywhere in town. The city of Eugene is working to protect the investment in roads using funding from local gas tax and the street repair bond measure. But we accept that as we grow, like all cities, we'll experience more traffic, especially during peak travel times. We don't have the local tax revenues, the necessary right-of-way, or the political will to limit growth that would be needed to limit traffic. Rather, to provide better transportation choices, we're looking to invest in options to walk, bicycle, and ride the bus safely, practically, and affordably. We know that many in our community, youth, seniors, those with disabilities, and those with low incomes cannot or choose not to drive. We know that active transportation helps keep our people healthy. We also know that reducing our reliance on the automobile is critical to advancing the goals of our climate recovery ordinance as transportation accounts for half of Eugene's greenhouse gas emissions. In brief, the issues before you now are not what our goals should be. You've already decided that long ago. In brief, the issue is before you tonight and in your deliberation is what actions do we take to advance the goals we have? Best that you ask that you keep the public record open to April 2nd, the end of spring break, till allow for more comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Sue Walling, followed by Cindy Allen.
Hi, I'm Sue Walling. I live at 108 High Street in Ward 7. When I first got involved in transportation planning, way back when Chris Pryor and I were co-chairs of the TDM Committee on Transplan, we used to talk about something called alternate modes of transportation. We had a bunch of bike lanes and some bridges across the river, and we got about 8% of trips made by bike and another four or five by walking. And that was pretty good for alternate transportation. Well, we don't talk about alternate transportation anymore, and for good reason. The analysis that went into the TSP shows that if we want to have a transportation system we can afford, not to mention one that addresses climate change and is safe and reduces congestion, we need to more than triple the number of trips made by bicycling, pedestrian, walking, and transit. Think of that. That means in 2035, we would have 23% trips as bike trips, another 23% walking, and another 12% on transit. We're no longer talking alternate transportation. This is serious multimodal transportation. But we sometimes still act as if it's alternate transportation. In our current street repair bond, only 6% of the funds is available for non-auto improvements. On South Willamette Street, we spent years planning and then another year on a trial of a street design that's been proven in cities across the country that it's safe. This timid, stick-your-toe-in-the-water approach is never going to give us the multimodal transportation system we need. The draft TSP includes most of the multimodal projects that we need to build. But we need to build them fast, we need to build them smart, and we need to act like we care, like we mean it. So what does that mean? First, there's funding. The entire bike-ped infrastructure would cost about $72 million to build. That should be the first $72 million that we spend because the success of the whole TSP depends on it. Secondly, we need to build networks. Every time we build a bike boulevard or a pedestrian median, we should also build the nearby connecting pathways or traffic calming or signs to make it safe and easy to connect to the rest of the network, to connect to transit, to shopping, schools, parks, so that the system really works. And third, we need leadership. We need a city council that's committed to this multimodal system, that will continue to remind the community of the vision and that will encourage staff to be bold and creative in building this multimodal system and that will back them up when a homeowner complains about losing a parking space or having to wait for 30 seconds at a traffic light or having a bus go through his neighborhood. We need to get serious about this multimodal transportation system. We also need to get serious about transportation demand management. Whether it's charging for parking or providing bus passes or building a locker room, institutions and employers can change people's travel behavior. I can imagine the school district's TDM plan involved creating a curriculum where students study about climate change and energy and human behavior and communication, and then come up with a plan to reduce the number of auto trips to their school. The same way we taught our parents to recycle, today's kids can tell their parents not to drive so much.
Thank you.
So we can make a better system.
Thank you. Cindy Allen, followed by Shane McRhodes.
Cindy Allen, Eugene. Doing a transportation study and setting an urban growth boundary are difficult when the funding of transportation at both the federal and state level are uncertain. Currently, our roads are what they are, and most are at capacity and not designed for as much traffic as they carry. Recently, in looking at the traffic regulations on the proposed $20 million, $2 million, five-story, 117 apartment and commercial area Amazon Corners in my residential area off Hilliard, a street already having much gridlock and significant traffic challenges, I was very surprised to see how few, vague, and limited in scope the traffic regulations were, and that was with a D, LOS, rating, and not the lower-proposed E. Springfield is annexing land for their 20-year analysis. Eugene is proposing zero changes in the urban growth boundary for housing and only infill and a transportation plan with uncertain funding. Many drive Priuses and electric cars. Many do not. The idling of cars has consequences for our air quality, especially in a valley. People do walk and ride bikes, but usually only in nice weather. And to expect large increases in numbers, to me, is unrealistic in our cold, climby, rainy weather. The weather also contributes to why so few stand at a bus stop. The South Willamette neighbors looked at 80-plus pages of complicated rezoning changes proposed for their neighborhood and questioned it, as have neighbors in the good pasture area and there even lawsuits related to transportation and infill on Oakley Lane. I think it's key that the city work closely with the neighborhood associations in adopting the transportation and urban growth boundary. Thank you.
Thank you. Shane McRhodes, followed by Creel Ridda White.
Hello, Shane McRhodes, from 250 East 36 Betty Taylor's Ward. I'm the former Safe Routes to School Program Manager for 4J School District, but currently a work-at-home dad to my seven-year-old daughter and six-year-old twin boys. I was born in Eugene 45 years ago and almost to the day, and learned to ride my bike on the River Path system. I started working active transportation by being a courier for the nation's first cargo bike courier company. It was actually started here in Eugene, Peddler's Express. And my profession and passion is to create a community where walking, biking, and general active transportation is safe, comfortable, and easy for more people to choose more often. I served on the advisory committee that helped form the Pedestrian Bicycle Master Plan that's being folded into this transportation system plan, as well as on the Transportation Community Resource Group, advised on this plan, also on the advisory committee for the Beltline Highway Facility Plan. And finally, I serve on the Board of Directors for the nonprofit Better Eugene Springfield Transportation. Obviously, I'm passionate about this subject. As a dad, my passion has only grown over the years as my three kids are now the ones who are walking and biking on our city streets. Today, I was in Salem lobbying for more funding for Safe Routes to School. I carpooled up there with Marina Hayek, who may be speaking tonight. As most of you know, Marina lost her son, Vaklav, nearly 10 years ago on Bailey Hill Road, which we fixed only after her loss, though we knew the issues of safety existed long before his death. We have to stop fixing streets as a reaction to tragedy and start proactively prioritizing for safety for our most vulnerable users. I work, talk, and play with families and kids throughout our region, and so many of them really want to walk and bike more, even in wet weather. But they are afraid because we have not created a transportation system that works for them to do so. These are your constituents who may not even know what the TSP means, but they know that they want safer streets designed and built so their children can walk to school, get to the park, and ride to their friend's house. They need not only this transportation system plan to reach the goal of safer streets for all, but they need your leadership to make the decisions that safety of our children's lives come first. I encourage you to ask staff to make sure that Vision Zero stands out strong in this plan as a top priority and also that we have a good mechanism for making sure that we are funding active transportation projects on a faster timeline. We need to fund those active transportation projects first and do it with a passion and commitment that shows we are committed to them and their children. We've been talking about change for a long time, and it's time for action. This plan is a step towards that. My children and our community's children deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Creel Ridda White, followed by Sarah Mazie.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilors, Commissioners. It was heartening to see in the draft Transportation System Plan mention of the GHG reduction targets, and it was transformative to see not just one, but multiple city councilors request that those targets be more reflected in the TSP and also ask how further emissions can be brought about, mission reductions can be brought about. The Transportation System Plan seems like yet another process and planning that has never had to consider GHG emission reductions before, but now more than ever needs to. Not just because it's the law of our land here in Eugene, but because it's going to affect us all in the near future. Notwithstanding the vague references to being able to modify it later, this is the time when you lay the foundation for policy that's going to last for decades. It's going to shape the transportation system, the transportation habits of Eugenians for at least 20 years, probably longer. That's a third, at least, of our emissions right there. I just want you guys to consider the weight of that, the opportunity you have to make meaningful, healthy, systemic policy. This school year, my son and I have been biking to his school almost every day, even through the rain, ice, snow. And it's been bonding for us. It's also been empowering for him, and it's been a way for him to connect to his community and his classmates, his teachers. But it's hard because I don't always feel safe. And there's a lot we can do with the TDM and the management tools, programs like Safe Routes here in town. There are known actions that can be taken to make our streets safer and to encourage further walking and biking. I think of that iconic line in Field of Dreams, "If you build it, it will come." But the "it" has to be pedestrian and bike infrastructure, not just more roads on a highway. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Mazie, followed by Howard Saxon.
My name's Sarah Mazie. I live at 534 Sunnyside Drive. I'm speaking with you this evening as the current Safe Routes to School Coordinator for 4J School District. And I want to express appreciation for all the work that's gone into this plan. In my current role, I am working towards increasing the percentage of students that are using active transportation to get to school safely. And as Shane mentioned, we've seen the tragic deaths of young people walking and biking on our transportation system, including en route to school. And while we want to increase the use of active transportation by our young people for their health, for our climate, and their future, we can't take any more deaths or serious injury on our transportation system. So, to get to that place, we need all of the pedestrian and bike projects that are listed in this plan, and we need them quickly. I'm hearing from parents, from principals, from staff, from community members at our local schools, urgent demands for improvements to the infrastructure to make the routes to their schools safe for kids to walk and bike there. In some cases, we're busing, we're paying, we're spending taxpayer money to bus students who live in the so-called "walk zone" because there's a hazard between them and their school. And that might just be one busy road that is unsafe to cross. In other schools, the principal, I heard from a principal that he doesn't want to promote Bike and Walk to School Day, and I don't blame him because there are hardly any students that can safely get to that school biking or walking with the current infrastructure. So, everyone involved wants improvements, but basically, they're told when they ask for these improvements that they need to get in line for the slim sliver of funding that's available for pedestrian and bike improvements, even in school zones. So I'm really pleased to see that the TSP incorporates the goals of the Pedestrian and Bike Master Plan and the Climate Recovery Ordinance, and I support the amount of pedestrian and bike projects that are in the plan. But I'm concerned that the plan won't get us all the way to those goals and create the protected networks of bike and pedestrian facilities that we need to enable our children and other community members to travel safely using active transportation. I support the change in the level of services, one piece of this puzzle as it shows that we're willing to prioritize our children and other vulnerable users of the transportation system over literally just a few seconds of delay to trips by automobile. But I also want to echo Sue Walling's comments that we really need to prioritize the bike and pedestrian projects in terms of timing when we implement those projects. The funding for those projects, we need to get creative in finding more funding because at the current levels of funding for bike and pedestrian infrastructure, there is not enough to get there by the end of the 20 years. And we need to create networks. Thank you.
Howard Saxon, followed by John Faville.
Good evening. My name is Howard Saxon. I reside at 2790 Beaumont Drive in Eugene. I'm here on behalf of the City Eugene Sustainability Commission. The commission's been following the Transportation System Plan for several years as it has been developed. And we're pleased to see that staff has responded to our comments and concerns. The draft better aligns with the Climate Recovery Ordinance, though it still falls short of fully integrating the Climate Recovery Ordinance and MPC scenario planning work. If we achieve the goals laid out in the TSP, Eugene will have made great strides towards sustainability, CRO goals, and achieving the goals of Envision Eugene. So we commend staff for creating this ambitious and important plan. However, we remain concerned that the TSP will not actually achieve these ambitious goals. The goals should include tripling percentage of trips made by foot, by bicycle, on transit, reducing fossil fuels by 50%, and ending overreliance on single-occupant automobiles. Achieving these goals would transform Eugene's transportation system and in process support sustainable land use, economic development, greater social equity, improved health, and neighborhood livability. On the other hand, an unsuccessful TSP that fails to meet these goals will compromise Eugene's future prospects. We believe that the TSP would more likely achieve its goals if it included a commitment to implement the plan in a strategic, results-oriented fashion. The current plan includes many strong policies, action items, and infrastructure projects, but the approach is somewhat shotgun-style. Bike-ped facilities will be added incrementally. LTD will gradually add transit facilities. Some streets will be configured as complete streets. Demand management programs might be used, and so on. To achieve Eugene, the goals, the plan needs a standalone implementation plan aimed at results. An implementation plan should include four primary elements, and a robust set of specific five-year benchmarks and strategies to up the ante if those benchmarks are not being achieved, an accelerated timeline for active mode projects that are anticipated to be the most efficient in affecting, changing travel behavior, strategic bundling and marketing of efforts to achieve a synergy of those effects, and a reexamination of Beltline options in the context of the CRO. In this regard, the commission recommends that the City Council direct the City Manager to evaluate GHG emissions associated with this project. The analysis should include both GHG emissions associated during the construction phase as well as the operational life of the facility. The results should be provided for public review and input prior to the approval of any Beltline options. Thank you.
Thank you. John Faville, followed by Franny Brindle.
Hi, Mayor and Commissioners and Councilors. My name is John Faville. I'm sorry. I am speaking on behalf of Northeast Neighbors Neighborhood Association. And I first want to say we work very closely with the process and are tremendously appreciative of it. The city people, city staff and planners came out to our neighborhood, came to our meetings, saw what the needs were, and responded by changing projects in the plan and by changing priorities, creating new projects. It was a terrific experience. I also want to say that after listening especially to the work session, one of the roles of the plan is to roll up a lot of very localized needs. Not all of those needs easily align with a broader strategy. I mean, there'll be a need for sidewalks here, relieved congestion there. And I guess I feel a kind of worry that as we look at the broad strategic implications of the plan, this other role of simply meeting a lot of very disparate needs on a very local level is in danger of getting lost sight of and in danger of not getting sufficiently funded as we move along. We don't feel the need as part of the system. We just feel the need at a very local level. From watching the work session, I also want to make a comment that kind of steps outside the bounds of TSP 2035. And that's to say that it's hard to imagine it working without close coordination with land use planning and that a lot of what we assume is going to work within TSP 35 gets helped by density clustered around services and density along key transportation corridors. We all know this because these are all terms that pop immediately into our head, and we know them from Envision Eugene. But they don't always seem to be ones prosecuted as fully as possible by city efforts. And so, we just want to voice a worry that TSP is looking to solve problems that extend beyond it, that it really needs a coordinated resolution, a resoluteness on the behalf of City Council to achieve those goals.
Thank you. Franny Brindle, followed by John Hagan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, County Commissioners. I'm Franny Brindle. I'm with the Oregon Department of Transportation, and I also live at 455 West 28th Avenue in Eugene. So I'm here to, first of all, thank the work, the hard work of the staff that's developed the TSP, the 2035 TSP. ODOT has been following the development of the TSP, and I'm here to support a timely adoption to the plan. As the area manager for ODOT, I'm very much interested in the Oregon 569 or the Beltline Highway, especially between Delta Highway and River Road. This is a heavily congested highway that is very unsafe, has a lot of weaving patterns of traffic because the interchanges are close together. It's a major regional transportation facility for our area and carries quite a lot of freight and commuter traffic. I believe that, and the improvements that we've been looking at that are in the TSP have been developed have been developed through a planning process that took place in 2012. As soon as the transportation system plan is adopted, ODOT stands ready to move forward with the environmental process, the environmental document, and to work with the county and the city on selection of a locally preferred alternative that would take into account planning study and get to improvements. We see this as very important because of the safety and congestion of this facility, but also because of the infrastructure. The bridges that cross the Willamette River are in poor condition, and we need a seismically resilient route. The improvements that are slated in the transportation system plan include a local arterial bridge that crosses the Willamette that is projected to take about 25% of the traffic crossing the river in the area and also accommodate bicycle and pedestrian and transit crossings over the Willamette. This is, again, a regionally significant facility, and its improvement will spur business and the economy and the growth in this area. I believe it can be done sustainably, and it could be a multimodal effort that would bring great improvements to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. John Hagan, followed by Alan Hancock.
My name's John Hagan, and it's ironic that I'm speaking after this lady that just spoke because I'm totally against the bridge. That bridge is absolutely crazy, because they're planning on dumping all that traffic down Huntsaker Beaver, which is a residential area. I happen to live on that street, own property on that street, talked to Mr. Bozovic about His first plan, that I agree with, was to take the traffic out Delta Highway, down Wilkes Drive, put the bridge down there. Most of the traffic that she's talking about coming across this bridge goes to River Road, goes out River Road, right where Wilkes Drive is. Wilkes Drive is already wide to accommodate, the sidewalks are already there, so I don't understand why you want to widen Huntsaker, put two lanes of traffic down that street, make it 48 feet wide, take all the front yards away from the residences there. I have three rentals on that street. None of those will have a parking spot. I won't be able to sell the property because no one wants a house with no parking. So please do not adopt the plan. If I was one of you people, I would wait for negotiations, because they'll come up with a better plan than they have now. Just sit and wait, they'll come up with a better plan. Please do not adopt that situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Hancock, followed by Josh Koschinski.
I'm Alan Hancock, 2244 Alder Street, and I just completed a four-year service with the Active Transportation Committee for the City of Eugene. And I've read the draft TSP, and I have a lot to say about it, but I'm just going to focus on one part that just drives me crazy, because I've been making this comment consistently over the last couple of years, and I haven't seen a whole lot of change. It has to do with policy, and in the document, in the TSP, it says, "The policies are statements adopted to provide a consistent course of action and move the community toward attainment of its goals." Well, that sounds really good. I think that's a great definition. But then on the next page, it starts specifying some of the policies. The system-wide policy says, "Consider safety first when making transportation decisions." Really? Consider safety first? I'm just asking you guys, if you had a health insurance policy that said something like, "Now, consider the patient's health first when making medical benefits," would you buy that policy? Really? Wouldn't you want to know whether your heart condition was going to be covered, or whether that cancer treatment was going to be paid for? Yeah, you'd want to know that. And so if you want to buy a transportation system plan, you want to know what you're going to get. So, for example, appropriate kind of policy might say something like, "When a school is built or redeveloped, the city will require a written and approved plan that indicates how safety and connectivity to nearby parks and residential areas will be improved for bicyclists and pedestrians." That's an objective criteria. You know either it's been done or it hasn't been done. That's a policy. And this goes on again and again with really vague policies, like create conditions that make bicycling better, more attractive than driving for most trips of two miles or less. Would you ever work for a company that had a compensation policy that said, "Well, make conditions more attractive than working for other employers?" Most of the time. So you get the idea. Without objective policies that can be tested, incremental decisions are made that are inconsistent, and then the larger goals won't be met. And then you have all these incremental decisions, such as removing parking for a bus stop or restriping a road for a bike lane. Neighbors get upset, and tons of time and energy is spent on evaluating the pros and cons of every little micro decision. That's just not effective government. So what we really need is to rewrite this TSP with policies that are objective so that you, as decision-makers, know, is it going to be achieving the goals or not going to achieve the goals? Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Koschinski, followed by Lori Powell.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors, County Commissioners. I'm going to keep my comments short, because I know City Council was here last week forever. I live at 925 West Broadway. I'm a resident of Ward 1 in Eugene, and I also work at the Department of Parking and Transportation at the University of Oregon. I'm here just representing myself, but I think my experience in that department speaks to some things. I'm supporting the 2035 TSP. I think you guys should pass it as it is, subject to maybe a few revisions. It contains policies and goals that make Eugene a better place to live and work, both for me and for potential employees at the university. The goals laid out here may seem ambitious on their face, tripling the amount of trips not taken by car, but we're already there at the University of Oregon. 47% of faculty and staff don't drive to work. I'm sorry, that's the other way. Only 47% drive. And so it may not seem achievable to the general population right now, but you can get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Powell, followed by Jim New.
Good evening, Councilors and Commissioners. My name is Lori Powell. I live in Ward 1, and I'm here with 350 Eugene. We appreciate the council's recent advocacy concerning the need to incorporate specific Climate Recovery Ordinance benchmarks into the transportation system plan in order to reduce community-wide greenhouse gas emissions. We understand the CRO and increased multimodal transportation are part of the draft plan. However, one of the primary metrics for measuring progress is the auto-centric level of service that focuses exclusively on the amount of delay and level of congestion for cars. It would be easy to use level of service as a means of justifying projects such as Beltline expansion on the premise that such changes would decrease emissions by increasing traffic flow, thus resulting in less idling, and that somehow this would be consistent with the CRO goals and benchmarks. But this approach misses the big picture and absolutely offers no incentive for single-occupant drivers to get out of their cars. So we need the other side of the coin, programs and measurement tools to bring the CRO and benchmarks firmly onto the table of the TSP. Tools such as transportation demand management that provides our citizens the information and tools and incentives they need to make informed choices, such as riding the bus, biking, walking, and carpooling. And I can assure you, based on our preliminary conversations with neighborhood associations and other groups in this community, that this community is hungry for more information, is absolutely poised to make the changes necessary to adopt multimodal transportation in alignment with the CRO benchmarks, given the incentives to do so and a funding stream to support such an effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim New, followed by Seth Sadowski.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Board of Commissioners. My name is Jim New. I live in Ward 7. Thank you, Council, for considering the CRO and last week's TSP workshop discussions. Most funding in the TSP goes to the study of motorized travel, which is the largest contributor to carbon dioxide emissions. Bicycle and pedestrian projects in the TSP have the shortest distances and consume the least amount of funding. In order to reach the goals of the TSP, three times as many bicycles, pedestrians, and public transportation trips need to take place, as do now. A 2014 Transportation System Survey revealed 43% who bike once per month or less would like to ride more often. 79% of that bike group would bike more often if bike lanes and paths were available or better connected. 71% said they would bike more often if they felt safer on the roads. That same survey polled residents who walk monthly or less often. 33% said they would like to walk more for transportation purposes. 54% agree they would walk more often if sidewalks in their neighborhoods were better connected. The TSP contains a large number of bike, pedestrian, and transit projects, which is a step in the right direction. However, many of these are small projects, less than a tenth of a mile long, that cost less than $50,000. According to the TSP, an entire build-out of the entire list of bike-ped projects would be $72 million. One single auto bridge over the Willamette would be $82 million. A list of options to fund bike, pedestrian projects needs to be requested of staff. The Street Review Panel suggests spending scenarios that would allocate more funds on bike-ped projects. Last week, TSP Work Session revealed no new funding sources have been provided for bike-ped projects. This body will influence how citizens travel for the next 20 years, and knowing that the city has committed to reduce community-wide fossil fuel emissions 50% by 2030 and 7.6% annually, the focus needs to be on more sustainable means. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Seth Sadowski, followed by Kevin Matthews.
Good evening, Councilors, Commissioners, and Mayor Viness. My comments tonight are fairly general, and I'm going to try to make them fairly quick. As you discuss potentially revise and hopefully implement this plan or something fairly similar, I'd like you to keep in mind two things. One is Eugene's Climate Recovery Ordinance and doing everything we can to get our transportation system within those goals. Two is Vision Zero. I believe the city has adopted Vision Zero and is working towards removing traffic deaths, and I know that the county is also doing similar work, and I know that everyone is concerned with the increases we've had in traffic deaths in our community. Every investment the city makes in improving conditions for people to walk, ride bikes, or ride buses, and make those more convenient, easier, and safer, helps with these two issues. Further, these investments tend to be relatively inexpensive compared to other roadway investments and may make some of those other investments unnecessary if we can actually get more people walking, biking, and riding transit. Therefore, investments in walking, biking, and transit should be heavy and front-loaded. This way, I believe we can make our transportation system safer, cleaner, and cheaper. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Matthews, followed by Lawton Elliott DeAngelis. Kevin? Kevin not here? How about Lawton Elliott DeAngelis? Okay. How about Peter? Oh, wait. Yep, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. I'll be brief. I didn't realize I was on the docket for tonight, but I am here to speak as a Eugene resident and also as the Safe Routes to School Coordinator in Springfield. I believe that Sarah and Shane really covered safe routes very well, but it's a very big priority of mine to make sure that we keep the students in our region safer, and we can do that by strategically planning and implementing infrastructure changes that do that. And so I think that there's a lot of really good things baked into the transportation system plan, and I hope that efforts that prioritize that safety for students are held very highly. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Peter Bolander, followed by Mark Rubinowitz.
First of all, thank you for your time. Peter Bolander, on Rosemary Avenue in Eugene, Oregon, that's where I live. I don't envy what you folks are doing. I glanced through that document on the internet, and it's pretty thick, and I'm going to be upfront and say, I don't know if I understand all of it, and you will understand why, may not understand all of it. But I just want to say thank you for your time in this effort. Apologize that it seems like, from what I've been reading, that my comments are coming late in the process. I just became aware of the process, and boy, what a process it is, but I thought throwing in my two cents worth in was of value. So I'm going to be talking about traffic in my local area. I'm going to be selfish and say they live out in the River Road area, and from my understanding, from looking at the plan, there doesn't seem to be any projects that address the River Road Beltline interchange. Maybe I'm misunderstanding that. If I do, I apologize, but from looking at that, I saw some references, some alternatives, but nothing in terms of the prioritizing of that River Road Beltline interchange. So I'm here to ask that you move that consideration of prioritizing that project up higher into the consideration, in that interchange is one of the most highly congested areas, from my viewpoint, in the area, and I don't see anything being done, and it's only going to get worse as more homes are built in that area. So I would like to have you at least consider that again, moving up your prioritizing of the projects, and if, looking at the big package, there are different alternatives, and there are multimillion, $200, $250 million. I believe that you can do little, small parcels of that and greatly improve the congestion in that area, and there were some of those identified in the low-build options found in Appendix B of Eugene's Transportation System Plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mark Rubinowitz, followed by Teresa Bischoff.
The largest and only really substantial part of this whole plan is widening Beltline to 10 or 11 lanes, quarter billion dollars, probably more. This assumes continued increase in traffic and the continued availability of cheap petroleum to power this growth. Yet, ODOT on their website says traffic peaked in Lane County in 2003 and in Oregon in 2002. The energy source that powers all of this congestion is the Alaska Pipeline, which peaked in 1988, 29 years ago, 2 million barrels a day. Now it's a half a million barrels a day. When it declines a little further, we will have gasoline rationing, which might have some impact on traffic congestion. Federal transportation law requires looking ahead 20 years for federally-funded transportation projects like Beltline widening. Now, it's anyone's guess how much energy there will be available in 2035, but given that conventional oil peaked in the U.S. in 1970, conventional natural gas peaked in 1973, and fracking for unconventional oil and gas has peaked now, it is likely traffic congestion will be the least of our problems 20 years in the future. Climatology is a science; geology is also a science. If you do promote, as expected, widening Beltline to 10 or 11 lanes, then I recommend rescinding the so-called Climate Recovery Ordinance, because it would be clear the rhetoric about climate mitigation is just rhetoric, not serious. If our biggest infrastructure project for the region for the rest of the oil era is massive highway expansion, then it's clear that sustainability is just Orwellian distortion of language. Just admit we like pollution, and we want to dig ourselves further into the hole of ecological and energy overshoot. Now, a number of climate-concerned citizens, including some in the room today, privately expressed shock when told the city was hoping to buy carbon credits to offset the highway widening. Maybe they'll summon the courage to complain about this in public. Now, energy rationing might be like an ice storm, like the one we had a few months ago, but one that never ends. It will be a permanent state of affairs imposed... It will be a permanent state of affairs imposed by geology. Given that we're at peak traffic, not no traffic, I support the low-billed option for Beltline and River Road, which would fix the weaving problems for a few million, not a few hundred million. You would not need an environmental impact statement that would cost millions of dollars given to CH2M Hill and other contractors, and we should prioritize seismic upgrades over highway widening. But like the failed West Eugene Porkway, the Beltline Widening would be a federal decision, not a city or county decision, and the construction cost would also not be a local obligation. But it shows a lack of local awareness that we live on a round, finite planet where consumption cannot continue forever ad infinitum. The Earth is not going to be the size of Jupiter, and this flying spaghetti monster is not going to refill the oil supplies of Alaska.
Thank you. Teresa Bischoff, followed by Matt McCray.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Bischoff. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Crescent Village Master Association, which consists of all of the property owners on both sides of Shadow View, north of Crescent Avenue. We support many of the goals in the draft Transportation System Plan. We oppose the proposed change in the street classification of Shadow View from a local street to a neighborhood collector for the following reasons. The neighborhood collector classification would shift Shadow View from primarily serving properties within the village to collecting traffic from outlying areas and funneling cars through the village. The designation will create a climate of uncertainty for fifteen businesses that currently operate in the village, with the concern that the city staff could remove on-street parking and substantially hinder the economic vitality of the area. The removal of on-street parking would also provide and decrease the element of safety. The volume of traffic on Shadow View does not warrant a change in the street classification. The TSP does not identify any transportation improvements to be consigned and constructed concurrent with the street classification, such as a traffic signal at Crescent and Shadow View. The change in classification does not coincide with any commitment by the city to help maintain the public right-of-way. And I've included in written testimony we've submitted here this evening what type of maintenance we have been doing, or the property owners have been doing, since the streets were constructed. Changing the street classification does, according to the Eugene Code, grant the city public work staff the ability to make future physical changes to the street without a land use process. The Crescent Village PUD involved extensive neighborhood and public input. We have extremely wide sidewalks. We have on-street parking, and we have a shared situation with the cars and the bicyclists. We also, according to state law, with the local street classification, have a 25 mile per hour limit, which will immediately go away with the change in classification. The wide sidewalks offer Shadow View numerous pedestrian amenities with storefront entrances and upper-story apartments. We believe that the change in classification would conflict with state goals addressing housing, the economy, and land use. It would also conflict with metroplan policies aimed at really fostering nodal developments that have a vibrant mixed-use area and a very walkable community. Our streets aren't designed according to the collector street standards. So, well, that concludes my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Matt McCray.
Thank you, councilors and commissioners. My name is Matt McCray. I live in Semple's Ward. I'm at 2584 Friendly Street. I want to start-
What about me?
What?
Don't you live in my area?
Oh, my gosh. You know, I'm embarrassed. And I'm in Commissioner Sorenson's district. Thank you for your service, sir. I do want to thank you all for your amazing leadership. This is, as somebody said, this is really hard stuff to do. So I just want to acknowledge how difficult the decisions that you all make are and how many crazy hours you spend in this room. It's really impressive. Anyway, I want to say that your leadership is crucial. In 2009, Eugene's City Council established a very aggressive fossil fuel reduction target to reduce fossil fuel use community-wide 50 percent by 2030. And it's great to see that goal incorporated within this TSP. And just last year, this city council adopted an even more aggressive greenhouse gas reduction goal aiming for 7.6 reductions every year. So thank you, city councilors, for being really remarkable national leaders by setting this science-based target. It's really noteworthy. Your leadership becomes even more important, however. You know this. I'm just speaking it for the record, perhaps. With this TSP, we get closer to tangible change, and so the decisions become more difficult. And so on, just really quick, big picture, just to recall that transportation is a pretty big piece of the pie, at some 30 percent of greenhouse gas emissions community-wide. Transportation infrastructure is long-lived, right? The things that we're going to build today are going to last for 20, 50, maybe longer, 20 years, 50 years. They're going to last for a long time, and they're going to influence people for a long amount of time. And also recall that cities have a tremendous influence in this particular area of emissions, right? When it comes to building emissions or the electricity system, we don't have that much influence as a small community. But you have a huge amount of influence over the emissions and our decisions about how we all get around. So please keep that in mind. Yes, the Transportation System Plan consists, contains a large number of bike, ped, and transit projects, but most of these are very small, cost very little, and the lion's share of the funding is still directed towards facilitating motorists driving alone. Yes, it has a lot of projects, but it doesn't appear to achieve the scale of change that's required, which is tripling the number of trips by transit on foot and by bike. So before you approve the TSP, please consider carefully whether or not it meets this council's longstanding safety, funding, and climate goals. Lastly, I'd like to speak to generational differences and just point out that the experiences of older generations and folks who make more money are not the same as younger generations and people who make less money. So thank you for your leadership over the past several years and for your continued leadership over the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And that, I believe, ends the public testimony. So normally, I would close the hearing at this point, but I understand that the board may want to discuss the possibility of continuing the public hearing. So I'm going to turn it over to the board to discuss that possibility and-
Thank you. And before we get into that discussion, I was wondering if I could ask your staff maybe to outline the public process to this point and the public notices that have been done to this point.
I'm Rob Interfeld, Transportation Planning Manager. I'm going to give you sort of a broad brush, because I don't have it all at my fingertips. But we had a, one of the main ways we engaged the public for this plan was through a group called the Transportation Community Resource Group. It was, gosh, probably around 50 people that met about a dozen times over a few years. It was open to anyone in the community, and we put the word out about it and included people from neighborhood associations, the business community. Lots of different kinds of stakeholder groups were involved in the TCRG. We also participated in Envision Eugene Community Outreach. So Envision Eugene held a series of community meetings all around Eugene. I think there were at least in five different quadrants of the city, and we participated in those and engaged the community through those. We also did, we also, one of our principles is go to where people are. So we met with different groups in the community during, at their meetings, whether it be neighborhood associations, different kinds of organizations. Public notice requirements, do you mean the public notice for the public hearing tonight?
Yeah, and any prior public notice that was done, but particularly for tonight's meeting.
For tonight's meeting, we, we had a list of all the people that we had heard from over the course of the process. We notified those people. We notified everyone who had submitted anything to the planning commission process. We also have a, we have an e-newsletter called In Motion that goes out to around 3,000 people in Eugene, and we, we sent that group, the people who subscribe to that, information about the public hearing.
Great. And you said it went through the Planning Commission also. Was there a notice for the Planning Commission meetings on the TSP?
There was. I'm not sure what it was. There was a different staff person managing the process at that point, so I don't know exactly what notice we did.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that there has been a public notice process for this, for this hearing. So I understand Commissioner Farr is on the phone, and this was something he was concerned about. Commissioner Farr, you want to jump into conversation here?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Bogovic. I would prefer to have a, extend the public hearing process and continue with a second JEO meeting to allow-
You're breaking up, Pat.
Okay, hang on a second. Is that, is that working better there?
Yes.
Okay. The Transportation Community Resource Group, if you look at that list, I am actually on that, the TCRG list. I'm one of the, one, the only county commissioner on that list, and there is one city council on that list, which is Cora Five. My concern is something that a previous speaker said, or actually, one of my concerns, I believe it was John Fabel, that it's difficult to imagine a TSP without interweaving it. I added the word interweaving with the land, with land use planning. And I, I guess my question at this point is, where are we on Envision Eugene, and how close to a recommendation regarding an extension of residential and/or industrial lands outside the UGB? And I, personally, I don't believe that the two can be disassociated with one another. If you, the reason I'm concerned about that, there are a number of reasons, but one is simply the cost of housing in Eugene. As we're moving forward, adding new residential inventory, residential land inventory, with the, one of the purposes being to make, make residential, residential choices more available to a wider variety of people. That is to say, add more low-income housing. We're not going to do it without an adequate transportation plan that fully serves whatever the residential land increase has to be. And so I guess my question then becomes, where are we with Envision Eugene? And I guess, at this point, I'd like to hear an answer to that. And one last thing I'll state is that at MTC last week, I asked specifically regarding the Beltline process, which is one that Commissioner Bogovic and I have been very closely associated with for quite some time. And I asked if a delay of a week, or excuse me, two or three or four weeks would have any issue, any significant impact on the Beltline Road environmental process. The answer to that was no. So, you know, that has nothing to do with extending the public hearing process and getting to hear from more people.
Okay. I think I'll give a chance for city staff maybe to respond to your question about the Envision Eugene process, and then maybe we can have a discussion about what the impact of a continued hearing would be.
I'm Catherine Brotherton, Deputy City Attorney. I am not the attorney that is handling the Envision Eugene process, that's Emily Jerome, but I can give you an update of where they are in the process and how the transportation planning is, been moving along kind of hand in hand with that. The, there is the public hearing scheduled for tomorrow for the Envision Eugene package with both the Eugene and the Lane County Planning Commission. So that's actually set for tomorrow night. When it comes to the complementary land use transportation planning, that's always the goal. That's the way the statewide planning goals are written, is to try to have these, the transportation and land use planning happen in coordination with each other. And I can tell you in the history of that, this has done that as closely as I've ever seen. The Transportation System Plan was integrated into the Envision Eugene process, and then they, you know, had their separate, the transportation pull-off of that, that included many of those folks that were part of the Envision Eugene planning process. When it comes to, there is a little bit of a chicken in the egg. You've got to have something that kind of moves forward first, because if you had, let's say, the one planning commission, public, joint public hearing that included all of the Envision Eugene, all of transportation, the concern would be you would inhibit the amount of public comment you could get. There's so much to talk about. Having the two going along joint tracks but not identical tracks is a way to get a lot of good public comment that is specific to the individual plans. So the, the issue of having Envision Eugene coming up right upon the tail, is so they're going through the process that the transportation plan just left, so they're coming through the Planning Commission, is that when it, there will need to be changes, assuming that the transportation plan is adopted prior to the Envision Eugene getting through its process, you will expect to see a couple of changes that will need to address where that UGB is changed to. They'll need to, because they're, they're going to need to provide transportation facilities. So there will be a chance to loop back through for the transportation facilities. But it really, they're, they're one right after the other, but having them all in the same one hearing was potentially problematic when it just came to getting good public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herr. That's great. And thank you very much, Mr. Herr. That, I, I'm fully familiar with that. And once again, I was involved in the, the planning process of the Transportation System Plan from the very beginning, the TCRG, that's my name on there. But as we looked at the number of people who testified tonight, and as I listened to Mr. Interfeld's description of how the outreach was put into the community, there was not a very broad geographic diversity in the number of people who, in the people who testified tonight. I think there was 20-some-odd people, perhaps, a couple of people Mr. Matthews didn't show, others didn't show. But I believe that other than Mr. Bischoff, nobody from, from the, from the Northeast Eugene that testified. Now, I could be wrong, but there is predominantly people from Southeast Eugene that testified. That being said, what is wrong, what's wrong with holding, holding on for another three or four weeks until we can get another joint director officials meeting together and have more info, perhaps from a broader geographic diversity? I just don't believe we've hit it. We need to get more people involved, more people actually getting down here and making statements about it. And I'm not, personally, I don't see the problem with waiting for four weeks. We've simply been waiting that long.
If I could add to a little bit of the public outreach that Rob Interfeld had provided to you, there was also, I'll speak to two things. There was also notice published in the paper for this meeting.
It's everybody's lead. Nothing else.
I get that. I will say, and not to pat city staff on the back too much, but during the, but it's worth doing, that during the Planning Commission process, there were a lot of neighborhood folks that came out and testified, and there is a, the notebook of that testimony is sitting in the city manager's office. And the hope is, and this isn't against for not leaving your, continuing the hearing, but it just why you may not have had some of those folks, is hopefully those issues got addressed. That's part of the intended process of that public process, is to hear from many of those of the public during the Planning Commission process, and a lot of changes were made to the plan in a hopes to address that. That was the outreach that Rob's group did to the neighborhood groups. So while it may be that word didn't get out of this meeting, and that is, that is possible, it's also possible that a lot of those issues were addressed earlier on, and the revised plan you have hopefully gets it though.
Commissioner Farr, this is Rob Interfeld. I just want to add also that one thing I missed, too, that's along the lines of what Catherine just said, is that during the Planning Commission process, I met with a joint committee of the River Road and Santa Clara Neighborhood Associations, both, both those two neighborhood associations together and the Northeast Neighbors separately, had submitted very detailed, thoughtful comments into the Planning Commission process. And so I met with, I met with a joint committee in Santa Clara River Road and was able to address and work through a lot of their concerns, and they make recommendations that made it into the Planning Commission, recommendations that are in the revised draft plan. With Northeast Neighbors, I went to a general meeting of that group and did the same, was able to update the plan to address a lot of their concerns. And John Faville from Northeast Neighbors was here tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Interfeld, for that explanation. And I don't doubt that you have outreach, have reached out to a lot of people as the planning process went along. Once again, you know, if you look at that long list, I was on, I'm on the list also. But the, I'm not, I would like to have a little bit more time to make certain that everybody who had recommendations for changes on the plan have had a chance to take a look at the, at the actual- at the actual draft that was being presented to us today, in order to make sure that the changes that they recommended were considered, and that it's not just, you know, basically hearing it for the first time tonight and then making a decision without further input seems a little bit fast for me. So I really would urge us to look for a second joint elected official meeting to complete the public, the public hearing, and have a chance to hear from more people, particularly from a larger geographic area. And nobody's answered my question yet. Why would it be a problem waiting four more weeks to get more people to testify on those?
So I'll turn to some of the city folks to ask that question, if there's an issue in holding an additional hearing.
There is no issue for us in keeping it open, and it's definitely one of our options. So if that, if the board chooses to keep it open, that's fine with the city. And we have several things we can do. Councilor Evans?
I would agree with that. I leaf leading through the written testimony as well as the testimony today, I don't see anybody from the Bethel area, which is going to be significantly impacted by any changes on Beltline. And within the context of the whole deal, I know it's difficult to reach out to, you know, that sector of the community and to get people to come downtown to a public hearing or even to email in their comments or responses, but I think that it requires a little bit more due diligence, not that you haven't done that, but it requires us to be, to extend more to reach out to those communities that are least involved but have desperate impacts by, you know, changes in the transportation system. And so when you have communities or communities that are, there's social equity issues that are involved, particularly when we're talking about, you know, individuals who don't have the wherewithal or well-heeled enough to be able to engage this kind of material all the time, don't have the resources to do it, don't have the time to do it, that we need to at least make a further effort to be able to engage those communities, because those are the communities that potentially are going to be impacted in ways that we might not imagine right at this particular time. So I would concur with Commissioner Farr. I think we need to hold the record open a little bit longer and also look at possibly having another JEO.
Any other...
Commissioner Sorensen?
I just wanted to make another comment about a public access to public meetings. And oftentimes, we see people who are caring for elderly relatives or children, and we have these meetings usually in a setting like this, a formal government building with lots of heavy light on us and a pretty decent sound system, and I think those are all good things. But we typically don't offer childcare for parents. We typically don't offer elder care. We usually don't make those kinds of accommodations to people. Now, certainly in the arena of Americans with Disabilities Act, we're trying to get the compliance here in Harris Hall. We've made huge strides, but I just want to point out that those barriers that the councilors are talking about aren't just barriers involving place, it also is what are we doing to try to make it possible for other people that traditionally don't show up at these meetings? And, you know, one idea is to hold those meetings in places, maybe Peterson Barn if that's an example of a community that isn't represented here tonight or wasn't represented here tonight, and you actually go out to those locations and hold those meetings there. So I'm certainly no expert on who came and who didn't come. We didn't really get everybody's street address tonight, but I just want to make that point about access isn't just a matter of where the meeting's held, it's also what kind of accommodations we're making for the people that show up to the meeting.
Can I get in the queue, Mayor?
Yes, you may. I think you're up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody coming to testify. I appreciate all the staff work that's been done so far. I just wanted to elaborate a little. If it seems like we may have another public hearing, there's at least perhaps some time to do something that I've been thinking about since our last council meeting on the TSP, and that's to request this from Rob. And I don't want to, I don't want to request something that's going to take an inordinate amount of time or something that's unreasonable. But one of the discussions we had at council was the fact that, and I asked Rob about this at the time, and I think Alan did too, that it is not likely the case that this TSP reflects any manner of guarantee that will accomplish our CRO obligations under the ordinance. And so I guess my question would be, before we get to approval, if we could have some kind of, perhaps just bullet point estimation from Rob, what would be required in the changes to the TSP in order for us to meet our obligations under the climate recovery ordinance? And perhaps he may want to speak to that now, I don't know.
Mike, this is John Race. I think a little bit as we talked about in the council work session the other day, that's, there's quite a bit of significant work that would be involved with that. And so I would be hesitant to recommend that we postpone the TSP for all that work. With that said, I do think having the work and being able to pursue the work is also important. You know, Alan's motion that was approved during the CIP process starts to get at some of that, as well as being able to fit some of that CRO measurements into the TSP. But I would just be concerned with the volume of that work and the time it would take right now to complete that work in order to have it prior to consideration of the TSP.
Right. Well, and I guess that's why I prefaced my comments with, as long as it seems we're going to perhaps have another hearing here, there may be at least a few weeks. And I certainly, certainly wouldn't want to hold up consideration of the TSP for that alone, but I do want to make sure that we're having a good public process. We've had an awful lot of people speak to us about the importance of meeting those obligations. So I'm, this is the appropriate document and the appropriate forum where I argued that the CIP was not a policy document. This absolutely is. And I think it's appropriate for us to say, we can make it or we can't make it, and here's what it would require, even if it's just a short summary bullet point list.
Well, I guess what I would say is, I do think that would take quite a bit of time. The other piece of it is, is as these various pieces of work get completed, the council can always choose to modify the TSP and/or adopt additional strategies or policies that would go in parallel with the TSP to ensure those things get taken care of. So I think there's ways to get there at the, in addition to having to try to stop, to postpone the TSP too long to get...
Yeah. I wouldn't want to do that either, but if I were going to make a motion at consideration of the TSP to consider our climate recovery ordinance, I'd want it to be as well informed as possible, so that's why I was asking for staff's assistance.
Commissioner Bogovic in the queue when I'm up.
Go ahead, Commissioner Farr.
Thank you very much. You know, for the City of Eugene staff, you guys have worked really hard on this. It's a huge document, and it's been a long time in coming, and I'm excited to move forward it, I really am. I think I'm not in disagreement with the ideas that are put forward in that, I'm not in disagreement with the concept. I think we would like to have a little bit more time to hear from more people, in person as possible or in writing as possible. I think that this is a, once again, it's a big, it's a big issue, it's a big document. And while Mr. Race does state that the TSP can be changed or amended, that's a process that, you know, you don't like to go through that, that's a lengthy process, and it takes time to make that happen, and there are obstacles to making any changes to the TSP. So I'd like to get a little bit more input on it. And with that, Mr. Bogovic, as I am, I'm the chair of the board right now, which doesn't allow me to make motions. However, tonight, you have the gavel, therefore I am in a position where I can make a motion. So I would like to move that we extend the public hearing until a second joint elected official meeting can be held between the City of Eugene and Lane County Board of Commissioners to hear from more of the public in public hearing.
So there's been a motion to continue the public hearing to a future date that I guess staff will have to get together on.
I'll second that from the board's perspective, and if I discuss...
Commissioner Lichen.
Real quickly, I, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. It's pretty obvious to me that Chair Farr is pretty passionate about extending the public hearing. I personally live in the Thurston Hills in Springfield, so this plan will have zero effect on me whatsoever. So I will defer to, are you, well, I have to drive here, that's correct, in my pickup, by myself. Anyway, but I, so I will defer to Chair Farr on this. It's obviously, he's pretty passionate about wanting to extend this. House Bill 3337 passed in 2007. We're nearly 10 years into this. What the hell's another couple, couple months, I guess? So as long as we can get this right, I think from that perspective, I'm okay with that. But I will say this, I want to just commend Eugene's staff. I've been involved in transportation issues for a long time. Frankly, I think your staff did a very, very good job, John, and I just wanted to compliment your staff on the excellent job they did on putting this together. It was good reading. I actually read most of this, believe it or not, on, over the weekend, and, but I just want to say, job well done, and I just wanted to express that. But based on that, with Commissioner Farr or Chair Farr wanting to extend this, I have no issue, and that's why I'm going to second this. Thank you.
Commissioner Sorensen to the motion.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question about whether we have to have this first reading, if we have to have the set over now, we have to know the date and time for the benefit of the public, or does this, is it okay to have it vague that we will have a second reading when we can get it together, to have a second reading?
Commissioner Sorensen, Andy Clark, County Councilors. If we were going to continue the meeting and avoid re-noticing the continued meeting, we would need a date, time, and, a date and time certain. My understanding is, and we talked a little bit about, the staff has talked about this before the meeting, I don't think that the city staff are ready with a date and time certain for a meeting date, and so essentially what we do is close this hearing but set another hearing for a date to be determined. And my understanding, the city staff will send out a notice that includes, for a joint...
So we don't have to determine that date right now?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
So, Andy, before you jump back, the motion was to continue the current hearing. Is that the correct motion? Or should we close this hearing and request a second hearing?
It's probably we needed to close the hearing and set another one. It's a matter of semantics, because effectively it's a notice issue, and because notice is going to go out of the next meeting...
Yeah, that was one of my concerns, is a continuance doesn't require additional notice. So will the second and the maker of the motion go with an amendment to make it to close the public hearing and request a second hearing?
I'm fine with that amendment, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Farr.
Mr. Second, yes. So the motion's been amended in a friendly way. We kind of were a little bit loose with our Robert's rules, maybe more so than you guys. But, so the motion's now to close the public hearing and request a second hearing on a date certain to be noticed once staff arranges that date. So, and it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion to the motion? I'll just really quick, put myself in the queue to say, I support the motion. Dr. Zeko asked in his testimony to hold the record open. I believe that was sufficient to even have the record held open, and that was for almost a month. So having a second hearing will also keep the record open that entire time to get additional written testimony to both the board and the commission, the city council. So any further discussion to the motion? So all those in favor of the motion to close the hearing and request a second hearing at a future date certain, please say aye.
Aye.
I assume that was an aye, Pat. Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so then we're closing this hearing officially. It's closed. So now for the city council, we have a couple of options. So one is, we can choose with the county to have another joint hearing and set that date together. The other option is we can, and that's assuming that you all want to be at the table. The other is, Catherine will correct me if I've got this wrong, the other option is that if you don't feel you need to be present at the next session, then we don't have to agree on the date, we can observe it, correct?
Correct. It really is, the city's record would remain open until the end of the second public hearing, and, but it has to do with scheduling. Do you want to physically be present, like you are this evening, and the city and the county will work together to come up with a date? Or do you want to say, pick a date county that works for you, you'll make sure you watch it? And really, those are your, those are the two options.
Any thoughts, councilors? Councilor Simple?
I think it's important to be able to do it in person. There's a lot of nonverbal communication that's valuable, and it shows a certain amount of commitment to the TSP to actually come, and so I think we need to honor that by also being there.
Other comments? Councilor Soret?
Yeah, I concur with Councilor Simple. I would prefer a joint hearing like we're having tonight. I think that's the preferable option.
Okay. Councilor Farr, do you have an opinion?
No, other than to say, in order to keep it moving, I would make a motion that we find a date when we can hold a joint TSP JEO.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion about that? All, any comment from Councilor Clark or Councilor Pauling?
No, Mayor.
Okay.
No, ma'am.
All in favor of another joint hearing? One, two, three, four, five, six councilors on the phone?
Yes.
Both of you, yes?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
All.
All right, all in favor, so we will schedule a joint hearing, and I believe that closes this meeting, correct?
Yep.
Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.